All right, it's 5:30. I would like to call this meeting of the City Council Technology and Utilities Subcommittee to order for Tuesday, March 25, 2025. Mr. Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
Chairman Janess.
Here.
Counselor Chow.
Here.
Counselor Scott.
Here.
Three present.
Thank you very much. We have one item on the agenda tonight, which is just an update on the current status of the Comcast franchise agreement. We are joined in the chamber tonight by Mr. Moran Fernandez, the city's CIO, and Mr. Austin Ball, the city's deputy CFO. Also here is Adam, I'm sorry, I forgot your last name, McEwen, I'm sorry about that, who represents LTC, who is a key stakeholder in this discussion. So, Mr. Fernandez, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you very much, Counselor. Thank you very much, Counselor. If I may, I have an opening statement that's been prepared for the city manager. Welcome to the City of Lowell's public hearing on the city's Comcast cable license renewal. The city manager, Thomas Golden, serving in his capacity as the city's cable statutory licensing issuing authority, has delegated me, mid on Fernandez, the city's chief information officer, to receive all comments from the hearing tonight, so that he can review the recording, review the input, and delegate accordingly on this license. With me this evening is the Technology and Utilities Subcommittee of the city council, which is holding a concurrent meeting on the Comcast renewal itself. This hearing is part of the city's process to hear from the public regarding the community's cable needs in connection with the city's consideration of final action and possible execution of a proposed Comcast renewal license. Notice of this hearing was in the local newspaper two successive weeks, and renewal documents have been available for public inspection at the office of the city clerk. Copies of the legal advertisements are here entered into the hearing record as hearing exhibits one and two. This hearing is being recorded as required by state regulations. By way of background for the public, please note that on July 27, 2023, the city previously held a public hearing to ascertain Lowell cable needs and invited the considered and considered public comment on license renewal needs. Members of the public, Comcast, and other attendees may have further comments and questions regarding Comcast's proposed renewal license, and Comcast and comments and/or questions should be directed to either myself or to the city manager directly. Before proceeding with the public hearing element of the actual license, if the subcommittee allows, the city manager would like to take a moment to thank the renewal team. There have been many members working on this, all of whom he views as being diligent and responsive in the process of drafting and negotiating the Lowell Comcast renewal license. If the subcommittee permits, we would like to ask persons seeking to comment to come forward and either identify themselves before speaking, or if a person participating remotely on Zoom, to please raise their hand so that the city clerk may identify them and call upon them to be heard. Incidentally, before hearing from the public, Comcast representative Kerry Morris would typically make a statement, however unforeseen events have not allowed her to be present today. Thank you, and if the subcommittee would allow us to proceed with comments from the public and interested parties, we would like to do so.
Thank you, Mr. Fernandez. I'd like to just acknowledge that we have been joined by city councillor Vesna Noon as well at this time. I would like to open the floor for any public comment. Mr. McEwen?
Just real briefly, my name is Adam McEwen. I'm the executive director of LTC, and we would be the beneficiary of, the main beneficiary of this, this contract. I know Moran and the team has done extensive work, and I just want to say that I support it. I don't want to take up too much time because I know there's some, some more meat to get to here, but obviously, we are in full support of, of the efforts of the city and how this contract goes forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
There is a gentleman on Zoom. Bill August?
Bill August is our legal counsel, who is working with us as external counsel for the city on this project.
And prior rules, I should say. I go back a long way.
Thank you, Bill. You're on, Bill, if you have any feedback.
Hi, I can hear you. I think Moran was going to open up the hearing.
We already did that, Bill. We're at the public hearing section. If you have any specific feedback to offer?
None at this point.
Thank you, sir. Back to the subcommittee.
Okay, is there anyone? Is there anyone else present who would like to speak? Counselor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and member of the committee. I think it's crucial that we continue to support what's Lowell, really. The LTC has been instrumental, instrumental for the city in terms of providing hundred and hundred of municipal hours and helping cover count from council to the land board, zoning, planning, and so on. And I think the last two years, it's four, 14% drop, roughly $100,000. If this keep going on, they're going to be suffer. And if they suffer, we suffer. So, any support that the cities and the state can provide them, really important. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. If there's anyone else present who would like to make comments tonight?
Can I make one brief comment in, just for the record, about the support?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, under the, under the Cable Act, the maximum that's allowed for the operating budget is 5% of the cable company's gross revenues. We cannot go higher than that for the, it's called the PEG access franchise fee, and this license is at the maximum on that. So, I just wanted to note that because I share the same concern as the councillor. You're in very good company. People who understand how much local programming does for the community, it's a unique resource. So, I wanted to assure the councillor that, you know, Comcast did agree to continue at the maximum allowed for the operating budget.
Okay, that's important context. I appreciate that. Thank you. Would either of my colleagues on the council, on the subcommittee, like to make any comment? Counselor Chow?
Mr. Chairman, thank you for hosting this, this meeting. I do have a few comments and questions, but I don't want to get ahead of myself. I know that you may have a presentation to provide for this meeting.
Yes, councillor, I have a brief presentation that I'd like to skim through for the highlights for everyone.
Okay, let, let's do that first. And I mean, during your presentation, maybe, I know that we are governed by federal guidance, state guidance, and local municipal guidance as well. So, in some way, our hands are tied, but maybe during a presentation, if you could focus on things that we can do as a local residents and stakeholders here, you know, like, you know, Comcast is a huge company, so there's so many variables, so many stakeholders at play. But during the presentation, add on like, you know, what can we do, you know, besides, you know, we're doing a renewal, how much of a say do we really have in, in the process?
Yes. Counselor Scott?
Thank you. So, we're just seeing this for the first time tonight. So, this, a little bit of, I'm gonna have to read it all and everything, but my questions, I guess, are just, I understand the arrangement for the percentage for public access and everything like that, but what other changes does this contract make? I guess is what I'm trying to understand.
Yes, councillor, if the question is, what is changing between the contract that's expiring and the contract that is renewal, that is renewing, the, there's really no substantial changes whatsoever.
There's no substantial changes?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I would just like to add my thanks and gratitude to the team that worked on negotiating this renewal. I know that's a lot of work, and it's been coming for quite a while. The original deal, or the previous deal expired in 2023 and has been extended to allow for this negotiation process, and I know that it's been a lot of work by a lot of hands. So, I just wanted to say that I appreciate that, and with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Fernandez.
Thank you very much, councillor. In, in front of you, you have the slide deck for this presentation. I, I don't want to take a lot of time on each slide. What I'd like to do is just point out that there is an overview. Let me see if I can, oops, can't get this. Can I go forward with that? I'm sorry. Oh, there we go. Can we go back? What I'll do is just, I'll just hop up to the podium. It'll be a little easier for me. Here we go. I'd, I'd like to just mention the overview page, which really discusses what is in this presentation without going into each sheet. What is the Community Antenna Television System license? Why don't we have other cable operators to choose from? Why does one contract require so much effort? What is the cable license statutory framework? Is there anything we specifically can't negotiate? The renewal process, negotiation results, renewal recommendations, and questions. I'm not going to go through all of these, but by all means, feel free to ask me any questions you have about them. I'd like to go forward to slide number four. Why don't we have other cable operators to choose from? Very generally speaking, this is a question that comes up on a routine basis. The, the cable license, this license is focused on video, and the video license typically requires a certain level of infrastructure throughout the city to deliver video. In the past, there's been a lot of comments about Verizon and other competitors. Verizon has always told us that they had no interest in building out the infrastructure to deliver this service. Ten years ago, Verizon came to the council and made it very clear that they would no longer be delivering any Fios services, but they recently changed their tune on that and have started delivering Fios services without video services. So, there are other providers in the city now delivering internet access as well as telephone access, but this license is strictly focused on video license access per the FCC regulations. That's just really worth noting.
Moran?
Thank you.
May I briefly add one footnote to that?
Yes, Attorney.
This is a very, very important point for the public and the councillors to know, that this license is completely non-exclusive. Moran made the very important point that we, the city tried to get Verizon to compete, and Verizon chose not to. That, but that has nothing to do with the license itself. The license is wide open to anyone who wants to compete, and so if anyone has a way of getting, that's a whole separate issue. Verizon did not compete because of their business calculations, not because of anything in this. So, our license is totally non-exclusive. If Verizon wants to come along, if RCN, anyone, the door is wide open.
Moving along, councillors, I would like to move on to why does the contract require so much effort? Real briefly, the contract did originally expire in 2023. COVID really took hold in 2020. Normally, we would start negotiations 18 months before, which would put us at 2021 into 2022 during the height and heat of COVID. So, there was a very lengthy process in getting negotiations started, getting through COVID, getting through a lot of changes in the environment, until we arrived at this final contract, or this final license agreement. I'm gonna skip through the statutory framework, which is what governs this, and I'm gonna move to what we cannot negotiate. This is important because it's something that often comes up. We cannot negotiate the following four items. We cannot negotiate non-video related services. This includes internet, telecommunications, wireless services, et cetera. Those are things that just are not on the table, can't be discussed. They're not, they're not part to the negotiation. We cannot negotiate rates. Rates are not allowed to be established and negotiated as part of this license. They are negotiated at the state level, at the Commonwealth. We cannot negotiate channel lineup, identifying specific channels that are made available as part of the video license, and we cannot negotiate channel placement, which is something that I'm sure everyone has probably noticed through the years, that the municipal channel has moved around. It's at the will of Comcast. However, there are things that we can negotiate, and that's what I'd like to focus on very quickly. So, we went through a renewal process with ascertainment, which we discussed, and the results of this renewal are a five-year license through February 28 of 2030, and given the rapidly evolving technologies, we think that's a solid timeframe. Right now, Comcast isn't doing many five-year licenses. They're, they're doing three or fewer because of all these changes in technology. A non-exclusive license, as Attorney August mentioned, should the opportunity materialize, the city stands prepared to negotiate with any cable provider that is interested in coming to the city and investing in the infrastructure necessary to deliver services within the city, albeit within the confines of what we're allowed to, which is video. So, yes, Verizon is coming through the city right now and providing internet service and providing telephony, but they have chosen not to negotiate with the city on any video services at this time. The city continues to maximize our PEG access funding. This is what really drives a lot of the funding opportunity. It's part of what funds LTC. It actually funds LTC to a large degree because of the percent that they receive for the community of, the community component of the PEG funding, which is Public Education and Government. As you know, there's two community channels that have extensive viewership within the community. There's the educational channel on the school side, and there's the government municipal channel. At one point in a prior contract to, to your question, Counselor Scott, we had negotiated bringing in a fifth channel, and we had looked at a fifth channel in a variety of ways, but we couldn't make a fifth channel work, and that was because we couldn't receive any additional funding to support a fifth channel. So, the one thing that we did give back to Comcast in this contract was the opportunity for a fifth channel because there was no way it would be funded because our funding, as Attorney August mentioned earlier, is maxed out right now. So, we continued with the four channels.
It is allocated to three areas of PEG access. Some is the public access, some is the educational, and some is the governmental. The governmental is municipal meeting coverage, which is separate from the LTC because you have to have the municipal meeting coverage.
We also have a franchise license fee that's maximized through the state. We have capital payments that are maximized. Percentage, they, they used to be a fixed amount. We had negotiated a percentage, and Comcast maintained the same percent. They also maintained and continued a discount to qualifying senior citizens. Continued their commitment to education connection program, which delivers high-speed internet services to the public schools, libraries, and qualifying private schools, as well as standard cable services to schools and municipal buildings. They continued their commitment to maintain, manage, and expand the city's institutional network, which is really somewhat unique within the Commonwealth, as it's been pretty much dismantled across the Commonwealth. And they continued their commitment to PEG access programming advancements, which could lead to high-definition channels, as well as other services that we're hopeful for, like on-demand, or even some of the cable guide programming that you see for other things that are broadcast. Generally speaking, as a renewal team at this time, we have determined that the cable operator has substantially complied with the material terms of the existing franchise and with applicable law, and we are recommending to the city manager that he considers the quality of the operator's service, including response to customer complaints and billing practices, and that the operator has the financial, legal, and technical ability to provide the services, and that the operator's proposal is reasonable to meet the future cable-related community needs and interests. That's what we will be recommending to the city manager as the issuing authority, so that he can assess the entirety of this meeting today and make his decision on the Comcast license. If you have any questions, I'm open to, to answer them, councillor. I'm just gonna go back to my seat.
If I can add one footnote, it'll help the councillors.
Go ahead, Attorney.
In my opinion, and Moran, you can shut me up at any time, but on the point that Moran made about being somewhat unique, getting in the INET continued, that, that's a, a network that, it's very unusual. It, it interconnects the schools and municipal buildings for data transmissions. There's one exception in the Cable Act. We can't regulate regular internet service, and then it says, except for an institutional network interconnecting municipal buildings. Others, so about a handful of cities that have that in Massachusetts. And in the old days, Comcast would provide the data transmission at no charge to the city. And there was a change in FCC that said they're supposed to charge for it because otherwise they'd be going above the 5% cap. Comcast charges, the few cities that have data transmissions between municipal buildings, Comcast charges the other cities. Haverhill, Dedham, Burlington, they all have to pay a monthly sum. Lowell, they made, is the single, this is what, by, in terms of why it took so long, it took about 12 months before the Lowell negotiation team got corporate authorization to agree to not charge Lowell for data transmissions. So, right now Lowell has a data network interconnecting municipal buildings. The IT department uses it all the time, and we're not paying for it. Down the road, five years from now, they said that, you know, they're gonna have to make Lowell go along like the other communities and pay a charge for it. But I have to just say, in my experience, that is truly outstanding, and it's one reason we recommended that the city manager sign this thing and lock it down because what's going on in Washington DC right now is they're all looking at everything they can slash and deregulate, and from a municipal perspective, it ain't good. Because one of the things they always try to deregulate is our powers, and so we got a real great benefit to the city in having institutional network at no charge. So, I do think it is in the city's interest, and it's just an opinion. There's no, no one has answers to all these things. It seems like it's really in the city's interest to lock that down before this new administration turns cable franchising upside down, which is what the lobbyists have been wanting to do for the last 10 years.
Thank you for that. I had two quick questions, and then I'll see if my colleagues do. Question one was, the fee, the franchise fee that's 50 cents per subscriber, I assume that's per month?
I know it's per year that we receive it. It is, actually, it is per month per subscriber. Actually, I want to take that back. No, that's not accurate. We, the subscribers don't pay for it.
Right.
It is something that Comcast pays us as part of the license. So, it is how we have been able to calculate subscribership over the years, is that one time a year where we receive this 50 cent per subscriber fee, and that has just kind of reinforced the drop in subscribers over the past 23 years that I've been tracking this here in the city. So, we, we have gone from an all-time high of 30,000-plus subscribers to a low of 14,000-plus subscribers.
Okay, so with 14,000.
There are two license fees. There are two license fees. Is the state 50 cents per subscriber per year, and you might hear that and go, oh, that's nothing. But remember when we said there's a 5% of gross revenues? Under the Cable Act, that is a franchise fee too, which is the same as a lot. So, there is the federal franchise fee authorized by the Cable Act. That's a big chunk of change, 5% of a cable company's gross revenues. No other industry pays 5% of their gross revenues to any city or town in the United States. Comcast pays it. So, there's a little teeny 50 cents per subscriber per year. That sounds like nothing. It is relative tiny, but next to that is the big 5%. That's also a license fee.
Okay, thank you.
But if I may, the, I was saying that the way we calculate the subscribership has always been based on that 50 cent fee because it's the only reporting mechanism we have to identify what's going on with subscribers in the city.
Sure, that makes sense. And then, the only other question I had was, was about the INET, and this is just the IT guy in me. I'm just curious how that's delivered. Is that delivered over the coax network to the buildings?
It's actually delivered over fiber.
Okay.
So, we have a hub and spoke with everything hubbed at one central location, spoke out to 70-plus locations throughout the city. This is something that was created in 1990s in exchange for a return fee back then when it was AT&amp;T, which is what allowed the positioning of cable modems out into the field. So, as the internet really started to take off and cable services took off, initially, the city negotiated with AT&amp;T back then to say, well, you know, we're, we're gonna give you this additional capacity on the network so that you can use it for cable modems that you can install in residential homes, and in exchange for that, you're gonna provide us with the institutional network allowing us to interconnect our buildings and facilities. And we use that for all the schools. We use that for the city. Unfortunately, it was also 20-plus years ago. So, when we look at the shelf life of many of these things, it starts becoming questionable long-term beyond the time that it's already been in place.
Okay, thank you. Either of my colleagues have any questions I'd like to ask? Counselor Chow?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, thank you, Moran, for the presentation, and I would thank the city manager's team, including Austin, who's here in the chamber with us for preparing the, working hard on the renewal process. Thank you to the attorney who's on the, the meeting with us as well. Just, just to follow up on Mr. Chairman's questions on the 50 cents per subscriber, I know you multiply that by, we now have 14,000 subscribers, so that's very, very small. It's about $7,000, right?
Yes, sir. As, as Attorney August was, was mentioning, that is the smaller portion of funds, of revenue that we receive, and it is only really useful for trying to identify how many subscribers do we have? What's going on with subscribership?
Sure, sure. My question really is, is to the, that the 5% of the gross revenue of Comcast, what, what is that in dollar amount? Do you have that figure ready?
Yes, sir. The, the gross annual revenue for that 5% obviously is going to fluctuate based on the number of subscribers, but on average, it's about $150,000 per percent.
Okay, $150,000, you said?
Approximately, yes, sir. And the way that it's broken out right now is.
Per 1%.
I'm sorry, per 1%, it's approximately 150,000.
So, 750,000, so.
So the way it's broken out is that currently 2% of that minus those fees of the 50 cent per subscriber, that goes to LTC, and that goes to LTC to assist with the public aspect of their programming.
Okay.
The remaining 3%, we have out of that, 1%, a little more than that, is what we use for our contract for the municipal services with LTC. Then we have another 1% that we use to fund a bunch of capital things between LTC and the schools, and the other 1% goes to schools for their educational channel.
Good. Thank you for giving us the percentage, but in terms just for easy understanding, for certification process, what exactly is that dollar amount per year on average? It doesn't have to be exact.
Per year on average, I would say schools is receiving 150,000 or so. LTC is receiving 300,000 or so, and the city is receiving 300,000 or so, well, I'd say 450,000 or so really for LTC because of the contract we have with them.
Sure, sure. Thank you for that, and I'm not quite sure if you or Adam here from LTC might be able to answer the next question. Are these figure, are they sufficient to operate the LTC programming and the PEG programming each year now? Is that, has it been sufficient, or are we running to deficit that the follow-up question would be then, then what would be the danger be if we don't have enough money coming in from Comcast to run this public programming, including the school and LTC?
That's an excellent question, Counselor. I would defer that to the Executive Director of LTC, who is the person who's coordinating all of the revenue and expenses for LTC.
Okay. Adam?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that a little bit? I was having a side conversation as well.
Yeah, there's a number here, it's like the revenue from LTC is, you know, about 300,000 is going to LTC, there's some money going through at the school and the city and so forth. How has the budget been for LTC? Is that manageable? Are you, is LTC in danger of not being able to provide some of their community programming?
Well, that would never be our intent to stop community programming, for sure, but we have, we have been operating on a budget that is falling every year. We're essentially on like a deficit budget, if you want to be blunt about it, for sure. If you look at our numbers in the past year, I think it was 13.9% year-over-year to the last check that we got, we typically would get checks twice a year from Comcast. I think this new agreement might, might do something like that. Oh, it's twice a year, okay. So it's twice a year that we get it. So it's a good way to track it. We were down 13.9% in the last check, and over a span of two fiscal years, we were down about $100,000 from where we had been. So it's, it's a significant drop. The contract, this is definitely something that we support, because this is the next mechanism, just to kind of keep things going the way that they are. A five-year contract is really, really a blessing for us, so I wholeheartedly support that part of it. It kind of has us into a spot where we have to figure things out. That's definitely where we're at, but this is the baseline, and any of this is much appreciated, for sure.
Thank you.
Counselor, if I may, real quick.
Go ahead.
In support of Adam's excellent work at LTC, and through the counsel and the city manager, what the city has done, we have, we have entered into contract with LTC in three-year, in a three-year contract, so that it helps them as they look at what their funding is for the future, et cetera, versus prior to Adam arriving and being there a year, we were doing one-year contracts. But after Adam arrived, and really kind of in, in support of Adam and everything he's been doing at LTC, our recommendations were to go to a three-year contract, allowing them to actually be able to look at forecasting and plan out their expenses and their revenues accordingly.
Thank you, and thank you for answering, Adam. And absolutely, we were supported, you know, this is funding come to the city to support its public programming. Otherwise, we would not have. The purpose of this meeting, as the chairman said earlier, is really to provide the public more information and their concerns about Comcast here in our community. Let me just ask one more question away from this a little bit. I know my colleague have questions too. I know that we are limited in terms of what we can negotiate, like the, all the things you mentioned, like the rates, the channel lineup and so forth, and a lot of these things are guided by federal and state as well. What about in terms of quality? I know that, you know, it's cable versus fiber optics or FiOS. Is this something that we can encourage Comcast to expand their service into in the future into Lowell, because I know the main concern for many residents in Lowell is, you know, cable versus fiber optics or FiOS, right? So, and I'm not quite sure if that has anything to do with why we're losing subscription or not, but my question is, you know, is there a way we can encourage Comcast to upgrade their technology?
Historically, Counselor...
Can I comment? Moran, let me just comment.
Absolutely, yes, yes.
One thing in terms of, and councilors, these are all just fantastic questions. My commenting is just to help clarify, like when we talk about losing subscribers, I just want to be, just know for the record, that's primarily from cord-cutting, and all the companies in Massachusetts are having similar loss of subscribers, the FiOS from Verizon, the Comcast. It really has to do with there being new Internet Protocol video packages, like Netflix and Disney, there's literally an avalanche of them in the last couple of years. So it sort of had less to do with the signal quality, because it had more to do with the creation of new, smaller, à la carte Internet Protocol packages, especially in the younger demographics. They just like the, the more à la carte approach of having smaller video packages. It's not a reflection on the underlying quality of the network. The underlying Comcast network is fiber to the node, and, you know, the, it's high-quality fiber, there's coax from the very last neighborhood node to the home, so it's called hybrid fiber coax, and that is just like, you know, first-rate architecture and design. That's the conventional logic, unless there's some unknown technical situation. I'm not an engineer that has not been disclosed to us or reported to us, but it is considered, like Verizon has their FiOS fiber, Comcast has its, it's called HFC. I'm just mentioning it because it is, it's not like you have an architecture of HFC, hybrid fiber coax, that's different or worse than anyone else. That's their, that's their classic, you know, tried and true technology. So that, so we're going into it thinking, we're not like settling for anything, but our understanding is that it's very good.
If I may, Counselor, real quickly. In, in the past, certainly competitors have, competitors in the marketplace have tried to differentiate themselves by saying, well, we can do this with fiber, we can do all this stuff. You know, realistically, today, in 2025, there isn't really much of a difference between the level of service or quality of service delivered with fiber directly to the home versus the hybrid coax fiber infrastructure that Comcast implements and that they have throughout the city. One of the other things is that while many other providers, including Verizon, are coming into the city and looking to provide their internet services and their telephony services throughout the city, they also have to build out their infrastructure, and they're doing that in phases, so they have not been able to cover the entire city. They're not able to negotiate some of the right-of-ways that we've already done for Comcast and for specialized locations like Western Ave Studios, where we had a situation with the railroad there, and the city went out of its way to negotiate on behalf of Western Ave Studios to get right-of-way to run the cable connections, the fiber, to the Western Ave Studio homes. Verizon is still in litigation with certain places or certain property owners to get their right-of-way to deliver their fiber optics. Comcast does provide 100% coverage throughout the city of Lowell, unlike other current providers, and they are required to deliver 100% coverage, and they have met that requirement at least going back to 2015, when we wrapped up the Western Ave Studio issue. But generally speaking, it is not something that is within the realm of this contract, and Comcast is routinely upgrading their connections throughout the city in order to deliver higher speeds, faster speeds, et cetera.
Right, that, right. And even with continued fiber, it's designed that they can change the electronics along the fiber and in the neighborhood nodes at any time, and they keep doing that to create more capacity. That's done through the electronics, which is changeable and is changed and upgraded a lot of the times.
Okay.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to recognize Counselor Scott. I know she has a couple of questions.
Yeah, just a few questions for you. So on the section that says, "At this time, the franchise license authority has determined the following. One of the bullets is the quality of the operator's service, including response to customer complaints and billing practices, but without regard to the mix or quality of cable services provided over the system, has been reasonable in light of community needs." I'm just curious, who makes that determination? Like what data quantified that statement?
Yes, yes, Counselor, that's an excellent question. They provide a Form 500, which is their, their complaint list on a routine basis to us to review. And anytime, so I, as the cable TV coordinator for the city, I may receive two calls a year at most. In the past year, I know that I've received three, but on average, it's two or less. And we always tell folks, if you have an interruption in your cable service, immediately contact Comcast. They will prorate you for any loss in service. They will also have to track it on the Form 500 that they file and submit to us. And the Form 500 will basically indicate things to us like, how many customers have been interrupted? How long was that interruption for? How quickly was it fixed and remediated? And they have historically, now with forms going back 23 years, been fairly quick to remediate issues. In the 23 years I've been serving in this capacity, there have only been a handful, less than five, where there have been customers that have had some serious problems that may have taken longer than a week to remediate, but Comcast personnel have always made sure that they send white-glove service out to fix it as quick as possible, specifically because they want to make sure that they are meeting customer service obligations.
So they're providing that data to you?
Yes, Counselor.
Okay. My other question is, it says that you cannot negotiate rates.
Correct.
But there is a negotiation result, says a continued discount to qualified senior citizens. Is the discount percentage negotiable?
Can I comment on that?
Yes, sir.
Sorry, Moran. And by the way, I just want to say, in addition to commenting on the license, so I don't forget, from the thank you department, Moran, John Myers, Austin, the mayor's office just were phenomenal in terms of chasing down all these details. Everyone could not have been more helpful. In terms of the senior discount, because of the prohibition against rate regulation and our negotiating rates, and even rate freezes have been prohibited, like just even stabilizing as rate regulation, Comcast puts its senior discount in a side letter, so it's not in the license, and that way, they say, in the letter, and I've been doing, they've been doing this for over 20 years, they put it in a letter, it's, it's based on income eligibility, they have four or five criteria, like receiving the real estate tax abatement, having veterans benefits, being on SSI, they have a whole bunch of, if you meet one of those and you're over 65, it means you can get it, but they don't put, so it's, that's why there's no inconsistency. They don't put it in the license, they put it in a side letter. So they say it's not required by the city, we just gave you the side letter, and they say in the side letter, it has been our practice to always honor the, they say to us, it has been our practice to always honor these side letters, we're doing it voluntarily, so therefore you're not regulating rates. That's the, you know, exactly how it plays out. I've seen their senior side letters for 20 years, because they refused to put it in the license, because that would be, and they have honored every single one of them, just based on it being in a letter.
And they don't change the percentages, like different cities, towns, they...
No, they have a standard. They say it's non-negotiable.
Non-negotiable.
Likewise, if I may, Counselor, one of the things that I know in the past has been raised, has been the location, keeping a location in Lowell, which they have voluntarily done, they built the location out on Plain Street, which wasn't there previously, to keep an Xfinity location in Lowell for the greater Lowell area to come to, even though they have at times talked about moving to a different location, and during the negotiations, they were like, well, we can't guarantee we're going to stay in Lowell, and we were like, pump the brakes. I mean, we've got LRTA bringing everybody to, to this location, and in the end, they said, okay, we, we will keep it in Lowell, and, and that is a voluntary thing they're doing as part of their commitment to the community, similar to how they also provide support for the mayor's holiday party. There, there's a variety of things that they do philanthropically for the city of Lowell throughout the course of the year that most of the public may or may not be aware of, but their philanthropy organization does provide an opportunity to deliver services to the city in addition to what we have in our license and side letters to just help the community.
Right. And on that note, as a continuing resource to the councilors, if you have constituents that have an issue or a problem, the person designated to Lowell by Comcast, the government relations person who handles Lowell is Carrie Morris, and she, I will say, she, if you have a question, she will meet with you or talk with you and will follow it up. There was not one occasion throughout this whole negotiation, there are many occasions where she couldn't get corporate authorization, or it took a long time, like to get the free INET, but there was never a time where she didn't emphasize she will always be present and responsive and try to see what she can do. So she, Comcast has a local government relations person, and that can be a resource, not just to the manager, but to councilors who have questions. People matter more than technology, that's the bottom line, because if you don't have people like that, you know, nothing happens.
Great, thank you very much. I think my colleagues are questioned out.
I might just have one more question, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
If, if there's time. You know, Comcast has been a great partner to the city, as you mentioned. I think during COVID, when there was homeschool and so forth, some underserved communities and neighborhoods didn't have the strength of that Wi-Fi or hotspot or internet service. I know that Comcast, you know, got involved in providing some free hotspot and Wi-Fi in some areas. Is Comcast still doing that today? Do you know if they still have program like free hotspot or free Wi-Fi?
They do. They have a program called the Education Connections Program, which they partner with the schools, they, in an attempt to bridge the digital gap, the digital divide, that includes everything from delivering low-cost internet connectivity to homes, to also providing free to low-cost laptops, et cetera, to enable folks to bridge that digital divide. And the Educational Connections Program, they participate, they partner with the schools predominantly to get the information out to parents and make them aware of it, and they do have a significant number of people that participate in that program.
Thank you. No further comment.
Thank you. At this time, is there any action needed by this subcommittee with this, or is this solely under the manager's purview?
I'll defer that to Counselor, to Attorney August, Counselor.
Right.
It's my understanding that our focus today was to provide an opportunity for you to learn about the license, and to ask questions, and to understand where the license... about the license and to ask questions and to understand where the license has been, what we're recommending to move forward with, et cetera. And then the city manager is the issuing authority would take the next steps. Attorney August, if you could comment?
Yeah, sure. By state law, the issuing authority in a city with your charter is only the city manager. In some cities that have a strong mayor, it's the mayor. And, and they cannot delegate the approval or denial decision. So the, after I told that to the mayor's staff, they still said it's so important to give the council an opportunity, a formal opportunity to be concurrently meeting here, but they cannot delegate away the ultimate licensing decision. What, you know, state law preempts anything that, and there were other, there have been several cases where like a, an issuing authority delegated the statutory licensing decision to another body, once to a town meeting, and then the court said, you can't, well, no, they, you know, you can have the town meeting vote on the appropriations or this and that, but not when the statutory framework says that either the town administrator and the town. So it's, that's the manager's decision. So what, you can provide input and support or the obvious, or the reverse if you don't support it, but the manager has to make the final call.
Okay. Well, thank you, Counselor. I think we'll accept this as a report of progress then and we will fill in the rest of the council on these developments. Thank you all for your work on this. I'd also like to acknowledge we have been joined in the chamber for quite a while by Counselor Rita Mears here, I just hadn't had an opportunity. Thank you for being here. So if there's no other action, I will.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, stand adjourned. Thank you very much.
Good night.